I'd like to welcome everybody to our city commission meeting tonight and ask if you could please silence or turn off your cell phones and remind everybody that our meetings can be viewed every day in channel two at 6:00 p.m. to midnight and on YouTube. So we'll go ahead and kick this off with a pledge allegiance, followed by silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. All right, we're going to kick off tonight with a proclamation here. How you doing? Good. All right. Leavenworth Farmers Market Week. Whereas the Leavenworth Farmers Market offers consumers farm-fresh, affordable, convenient, and healthy products such as fruits, vegetables, cheeses, herbs, flowers, baked goods, meat, and whereas farmers markets serve as integral links among urban, suburban, and rural communities, affording farmers and consumers the opportunity to interact. And whereas the popularity of farmers markets continues to rise as more and more consumers discover the joys of shopping for unique ingredients sold directly from the farm in their freshest possible state, and whereas farmers markets play a key role in developing local and regional food systems that support the sustainability of family farms, revitalize communities, and provide opportunities for farmers and consumers to interact. Now therefore, I, Griff Martin, the mayor of Leavenworth City, Kansas, hereby recognize farmers markets and the contributions farmers make to daily life in America and give notice to our citizens that August 4th through the 10th, 2024 be proclaimed Leavenworth Farmers Market Week.
I had a long speech prepared, but given that it's standing room only, I'll delete the part about how good watermelon season is going. I'd just like to thank everyone here, all the members of the board, all the way down to the Parks Department that does our trash, that has an independent nonprofit organization, especially after I skim off a lot off the top. It's always great to have city support and, you know, the recognition's great. So if, for those of you that don't know, we're open Wednesdays, 8:00 a.m. to noon, Saturdays, 7:00 a.m. to noon. Season's in full spring. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes from July 9th, 2024 regular meeting. There's no questions, you just need a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from July 9th, regular meeting.
Okay, motion's been seconded, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, 4-0 pass. Moving on to new business, I was notified that we've got a few folks here that would like to give some public comment about item 11 tonight, first consideration ordinance for special use permit related to the solid waste facility off of Fourth Street. So with that, for the rest of the commission's cool with it, might like to go ahead and move that up to the third item tonight after a public comment. Everybody's cool with that?
Yes.
Okay. And from there, Sarah?
First up is Charles Carlini.
Okay. And I would just ask if you could please state your name and address, and I would ask if everybody could keep their comments to two to three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Charles Carlini. My wife and I have resided at 712 North 18th for over 42 years. Throughout my life, I've always taken the trash out of the home, never have I considered taking trash into my home. I'm appalled that a proposal to turn Abel's Field into a waste transfer station to bring trash into our Leavenworth home is even being considered to do just that. For anyone who believes that what's happening in Kansas City with their disastrous plague of transfer trucks that allow trash to blow out of them everywhere they go and believes that will happen here are truly blind to this issue, they're wrong and sorely misguided. Who in their right mind would want a trash dump within a few feet of the main throw fur of our town? And yet, here we are. I certainly don't want hundreds of trash trucks driving through our town allowing trash to blow into the streets, bringing tons of garbage, pollutants, and toxic agents for all the surrounding communities to the center of Leavenworth and dumping it here. What will stop the contamination of your groundwater with toxic chemicals and other environmental hazards? We now know more than ever that toxic contamination causes issues for decades, possibly centuries, and yet, here we are. Has anyone conducted an environmental impact study before bringing this proposed proposal forward? I think not, has the city engineer evaluated the impact on our streets and roads by the hundreds of trash-laden heavy trucks traveling to our beautiful city on a daily basis? Anyone considered the cost to pay for the upkeep and maintenance of these streets? I think not, and yet, here we are. I'm sure the area of homes and businesses and parks would not welcome the chance you felt that would be dumped in their laps. The swirling winds and atmospheric conditions inevitably spread that toxic air and stench throughout our city and beyond. Who's going to answer for the damage to our lungs and the impact on our health and health and safety of our children, grandchildren, and generations after? I already suffer from exposure to toxic air from military service. I don't need to inhale more toxic agents from a first-city hometown intercity dump. Let's call it what it is, a dump, and not try to glorify it. I'm sure that the surrounding businesses and homes would be plagued with an influx of rodents, insects, feral animals, and other pests that thrive in these filthy conditions. This is a toxic disaster waiting to happen. The residents of New Palestine, Ohio, never saw that train wreck coming, the environmental and physical chaos it's caused. They couldn't help it. Our city leaders, however, can. They can choose a different path, a wholesome and positive way to impact our first city. However, our mayor and commissioners not only know the potential for disaster, they're all actually considered inviting it in. This is a Pandora's Box of unthinkable environmental catastrophes and potential life-changing disasters that we do not need to happen. The developers make it sound like an oasis, a take-this-because-you-will-really-like-it proposal while they reap the profits. Make no mistake, there are huge profits to be made in trash, all the detriment of our beautiful city, our businesses, and our residents. I could go on with the negatives, however, I'm not able to think of one good reason to move this idea forward. Oh, wait, we could add home of the first city dump signage at the north and south Fourth Street entrances to our city, right next to those of Wayne Simeon, Melissa Etheridge, Amy Hastings, and others honored there. Better yet, we can add a wayside station at the dump on the self-guided wayside tour of our famous people and places. Not. If you care for our city, its history, heritage, values, and citizens, please kill this idea immediately. It is not in our city's best interest. We need to stand together to bring quality and sustaining projects to our community for the use of Abel's Field and areas like it. That will enhance our lives and our community as a whole rather than destroy our way of life. This proposal and other recent schemes which bring questionable value to this city with speculative benefits, savings, and manpower and/or resources are ill-conceived and unwelcome. We are not a third-world country that lives with trash and filth around them. We're a proud and historic community. We should encourage responsible growth that will enhance and enrich our lives. I believe the majority of the citizens of Leavenworth stand with me in condemning this and similar projects and proposals that would turn this city into a repository for trash or a destination for criminals or a safe haven for illegals.
Thank you, sir.
Those who believe or think or vote otherwise do not represent me or my family, nor do they believe they accurately represent the historic first city or its citizens. If you don't represent us, perhaps it's time to consider a different course for your future.
Thank you, sir.
How many times do we have to say no to these horrible ideas?
All right, thank you, sir, for your time. I need to give everybody some time tonight, but I appreciate your comments.
Let's make a positive impact.
Mr. Louis Climp?
I want to give this, and she can make you a copy of it. This is written in 1878. It's a history of Leavenworth, Vermont, Paulie, Fort Leavenworth, the 20 to 30 areas that were in this community.
Mr. Climp, if you could go ahead and state your name and address up there, that'd be great.
Yeah, I didn't want to start the clock because this is history, there's 500, you know.
Thank you.
If it was anybody else, it would have been a sense of living longer, 86 is long Are we going to be able to talk when you discuss the Fort Leavenworth Museum?
No.
No.
We're just getting a presentation tonight.
No, I'm talking about when you bring that subject up.
No.
Oh, that's nice. And yet, I can't talk on it now?
Well, you're free to talk about whatever you want right now, you've got two to three minutes, that'd be great.
Okay. Sorry, I thought you were going to talk about the other.
Well, thanks to the Abel's Field participants, that was really great that nine of you came out because governmental functions don't do anything. There's 597 businesses back in the 1850s, okay? That's a lot of businesses. And Climp's got here in 1860, so I've been here a while. And I just found out the Munches, and I always called my kids the Munch Kids, they got here in the 1850s. So we've been here a long time, we know the history of Leavenworth. So if I'm not going to get to talk about the Fort Leavenworth, I'm going to say that is a shame.
No, you can talk about Fort Leavenworth, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you, Nancy.
I'm sorry.
You know, they want 47, 500. Well, what do we got here? We got C.W. Parker, the Leavenworth Historical Museum Association, Leavenworth County Historic Society, Leavenworth History Museum, Fred Harvey, Richard Allen, Tonga Noxie has one, but they don't have anything to do with our money. At least five museums in Leavenworth and one in Lansing, Baser, and Tonga Noxie. And where are they talking about getting the money from? You're getting it from the taxes or the money that's in your hidden fund that if I go say, can I have a copy of that, it costs me $15, she'll fill out the report. We have to pay $15 for everything we get from you guys, and that's a little bit unfair in my mind. But two people have been in planning and zoning, Dick Gerzini and Louis Climp, we both had served, and so we know what they do. And your director was a little bit something. I've heard a lot of people say, let's hook it to Stubby Park. Now, Julia's Cause, I knew him before any of the Cause kids that are here today, I knew David before anyone were here today, so I knew what kind of people they were, and they were good people. So somewhere, we need to be functioning and make that into an added facility so when people come down the highway, that is the only business in this community that can succeed, the only business. Nobody else, God bless their hearts, the ones that are staying business up on the county and Fifth Street, the ladies, used to be ladies, you know, churches and all that other stuff. Now, that's good for God, I appreciate what anybody gives to God. But all these 800 or 600 were bars, lawyers, churches, and it's interesting, you ought to read that, then you'll know about the history because it's nice to know about the history of Leavenworth.
Thank you, Mr. Climp.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tom Lahon?
All righty.
Tom Lahon, 526 South Hickory Trail. I'd like to speak against the Abel's Field Transfer Station. The first thing I want to mention is, how did we make a decision that we actually needed it? We've been using the transfer station in Lansing for the last, what, 20 years? And that's a county-owned facility. So I'd like to see some kind of documentation where you guys have done some kind of a study that has determined the need. Now, once you produce a need, then we can talk about a location, but I'm going to talk about location anyway. How did we determine, just because it's an empty field, to put a dump right on Main Street? Reasons against it? We just spent a fortune on Stubby Park for children to play. So now you're going to put all the traffic, big trash trucks, right next to them. Trucks will be lined up, safety issues, odor issues. No matter what you do, you're not going to make it smell sweet. We've got enough odor from the sewer plant on the other side of the street. And it was mentioned earlier, there's going to be trash thrown around, there's just no way around it. Yep, you can clean it up, and that's all fine and dandy. But the thing that bothers me the most is, Fourth Street is our main drag for the people coming into this city, whether they're visitors or employees or just shoppers. Is that what you want to present to the city?
Yes.
A dump right on Main Street?
Yes.
That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Darlene Derringer.
Hello, I'm Darlene Derringer, and I'm still wondering about the parking on Gerard. There's no parking for us to park. I live in the duplex. The lady next to me, she has her automobile. I know, there's three of us, my family, my son, plus me and my husband that has our cars. We can't park. We don't have no alley to park in the back, and if I did, I tried it, I got stuck, my daughter got stuck. But there's no way to turn around because you'll run into the creek. And then I still have to walk up to the house, it's a long walk, I can't walk that far. You're supposed to came out and see what we could do? We still have no parking on either side of the street. I can see it, if there's make parking on one side or the other. The ones that's calling about it, I can't. I talked to the neighbors, there's two of them, they have a big driveway that goes down to their house, they could park, said the cars there, easy, and still get out. But I don't have nowhere to park. So what are we going to do about it? Still, you said we probably know something about it by the Fourth of July, because I have family, they can't even come over to visit. No place to park. So I just need somewhere to park. Okay, that's all I wanted to say, I have to have someplace to park. The cause has been called on us quite a few times. They say, it don't bother them, it's the neighbors that's complaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitch, could we make a note to follow up on that?
So if you recall, our was here two weeks ago, indicated that the final decision was going to be at the end of July, I talked to the interim chief today and reaffirmed that we're going to get that decision this week, so we'll have information this week.
Okay, cool, thank you. Go, sir. Anybody else?
Somebody's going to sign up so we can move on to the first consideration.
Okay, anybody else to make a, go ahead, just name and address, please.
My name is Annette Hamilton, and I live at 225 Potawatomi Street, and I thank you, Commissioners, for your time and city planners for your time. My father's side of the family was one of the first hundred families here in Leavenworth, and Abel's Field has been there for close to 100 years. Many generations of my family, cousins and distant cousins, and I'm related to half the town. But anyway, what I'm trying to say is, when they shut down Abel's Field, they promised that it was going to be something that was going to honor that legacy that was going to go back there. I'm not seeing that with the trash dump transfer station, sorry. I would like our city commissioners to do better and honor, okay, the citizens of Leavenworth and the heritage that we're trying to build here, because we're trying to build a beautiful place to live and not a transfer dump station, okay? Because that's not what you, the message you want to be leaving or your legacy, okay, for any of you, because none of the voters want that there. So I would suggest you vote no if you like your jobs, if you like what you're doing. Vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's nobody else, we'll go ahead and, yes, sir, name and address, please. If you could come on up to the mic and state your name and address.
I live in Lansing, am I allowed to speak?
No. No.
I live in Leavenworth, can I speak?
Yeah. Sorry.
Last one, last one, we've got to move on.
I live at 406 North Broadway. This is my home, this is where I've decided to live. My wife and I have lived here in Leavenworth since 1997. I own the house across the street from St. Joseph's Church. It's an antique house, I am proud of it. I've lived here, this is my home, this is where I am going to live. I don't want a dump on Fourth Street. It is an embarrassment to us. I will fight this as far as I have to, do the right thing as our city commission and stop this madness. You can't repurpose Abel's Field where my son played football when he was at Leavenworth High School, where my daughter played soccer when she was at a Matt Gyllenhaal. You can't repurpose Abel's Field and turn it into something beautiful? How dare you? How dare you?
Thank you.
Do the right thing.
We don't need to take yelling.
We look to you to guide our city, to make our city a better city, more attractive to people to come here, to live, not to turn it into an embarrassment.
Okay.
This will make national news. We already are the city of prisons, you know? Whoa, hey, Leavenworth, I've heard of that, that's where the big house is. Yeah!
Sir, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much. Now you know how I feel.
Yes, we do. So I definitely want to make sure that we're sensitive to the rest of the agenda tonight. I know typically we like to have folks sign in for a public comment. If you do live in Leavenworth, you are welcome to come up as long as you state your name and address, but I would ask that you keep your comments to two to three minutes.
I think this is enough.
It's okay, it's all right, this is people's house.
With all due respect, I may not be a Leavenworth citizen, I mean, but I do live in a sister city of Lansing, and I do shop in Leavenworth District from time to time. And we do breathe the same air, so technically, aren't we?
No.
All citizens?
It's okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, in that case, Dan. All right, this is my husband, we both have a comment to this lovely discussion.
Well, I know I live in Lansing now, but I lived in Leavenworth for many years, down on Cherokee Street, and I love this city. I've lived here longer than anywhere I've lived in my entire life, and I don't want to disrespect anybody here, I don't know any of you personally, and I don't want to make any personal negative comments. But I'll be honest, not just here, but around the country everywhere now, one of the things I'm so wary of is the few at the top who are elected to serve the people dumping on the people. And this feels like literally we're just being dumped on by the people that we chose to serve us. We saw this go on during COVID where things were done that ruined businesses, that put, I remember Retro Diner down here, I used to love that place, got completely shut down, went out of business because of what went on during COVID. And now we have another situation where it's just like, we're going to put a trash dump in the middle of your city, it just feels cruel and unkind. That's all. And so I would just appeal to your better nature to do something good for the city. You know, I'm not here to comment on the problem, I just would like to see good things done for this city.
Okay.
And for the people here, that's all.
And it may not be in the same city as Lansing, but the air does pass through Lansing. So the air that will blow the trash aroma would definitely in Lansing, and...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bless you.
Guys, everybody that's here, I want everybody to realize, I realize we have a few procedural requirements for our meetings, but I do recognize this is our people's house, and it doesn't matter to me what everybody has to say. I do want to be respectful for everybody's time here tonight and a few other items that are on the agenda. Can I get a show of hands? Anybody else? Okay, so if you state your name and address, please.
First of all, good evening, my name is Birgit Barron. I live on Ninth Avenue in Randolph, right on the corner, beautiful little house. I want to tell you how I got here. I know I have an accent, but I did serve 24 years and six months in the United States Army, so I am a retiree. I felt this is the right place for me. When I first got here in 88, I was weary, I said, oh, this is a little town, but I remember it from then, and Abel's Field was one of them. I always thought it was wonderful. The Special Olympics took place down there many times. As a matter of fact, when I joined the Sheriff's Department, yes, I served there too. I did my agility test there. I can't tell you how many times I did a PT test on Abel's Field. It was a nice extra field that we have in here in Leavenworth. It was always, were always welcome. You put a dump there, what people have not talked about yet is, when that dump goes on fire, do you have the resources that it takes to take out the fire? No, you don't, not around there. I am in emergency management, I have a doctorate in there, so I know what I'm talking about. I've done emergency management throughout my military career, a little bit, you know, on the sheriff's side, I learned all ins and outs and stuff, and as a medical person. So asthma, lung sicknesses, and so forth, when you have children that are very able to get sick on these things, with the air's not going to be any better. But my biggest concern is, have you ever seen tires burn, the black smoke? How can you take care of that? You don't have enough fire engines around here to take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more, if you could please state your name and address, and I think what we might want to do possibly, Pat, going forward, maybe five minutes before our next city meeting, we'll make an announcement to the crowd, everybody's coming, if they'd like to go ahead and make a comment to sign in, everything like that, so go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Donna Jean Fletcher, I was born and raised in Leavenworth. I've served in many, many capacities of this...
Oh, yes, your address, please, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
Your address? Your address?
My, oh, I'm sorry, 542 Neverland.
Thank you.
Yes. I have been involved in Leavenworth all of my life, and I, as these other people are appalled at the idea of a dump station here. But another thing on your agenda bothers me too, and that is the feasibility study for funding the Fort Leavenworth Museum. I am the city PGA, or excuse me, I used to be the city PGA president a long time ago. I am the president for the Leavenworth, excuse me, Museums Association, all right? The first city museum, Carousel and Harvey House. And I can't see when you're not able to fund the local one, these museums, why you would be wanting to fund the federal museums, because the Army isn't part of the federal. That's mine. Just think about that, okay? I'm not trying to be difficult, but we have things here that need help.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. And with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item then, the first consideration ordinance, special use permit related to solid waste facility at 1701 South Fourth Street.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you said, this is a first consideration ordinance regarding 2024-14 SUP, which is related to a solid waste facility in the I-2 zoning district at 1701 South Fourth Street. This has been requested by Brother's Disposal. Solid waste facilities are allowed in the I-2 zoning district with approval of a special use permit. So the proposed facility would function as a transfer station, allowing for the collection of trash and recyclable materials from commercial users as well as residents. The proposed facility would be accessed by an entrance on Second Street, there would be no access from Poplar Street. If you're looking at the image on the screens, north is to the right, so Second Street is over here towards the bottom, it's tilted on its side. So again, all access would be from Second Street, there would be no access from Poplar Street. Vehicles would first come into the property and... Vehicles would first come into the property and be weighed for their incoming debris. They would then either continue to the citizen drop-off area, recycling area, or to the transfer station building, which is that larger building kind of in the middle of the property there. Once the trash has been deposited, vehicles would exit the facility again onto Second Street the same way they came in. Commercial trucks would be directed to go to the south to Marion Street, and again, not get onto Fourth Street via Poplar. Marion Street, as you're probably familiar, has been reconfigured in recent years to accommodate commercial trucks that are already using that area. So trash brought in by commercial trucks would be deposited again into the transfer station building and then loaded into a trailer. Each trailer holds 20 tons of waste, and once full, would be transported to a landfill. The floor of the transfer station building would be concrete and would be cleaned daily, and there would be no trash stored outside at any time. The property would be screened with fencing and landscaping. And, let's see, the, so the entrance on Poplar Street would remain, but again, that would remain gated and only be used in cases of flooding. Sometimes, as you're aware, if Second Street does flood, and that entrance would potentially be inaccessible. So the anticipated hours of operation would be 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM on weekdays and 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturdays. So the commission may recommend issuance of a special use permit whenever it finds that four criteria have been met. The first is that the proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of the ordinance. Based on the information provided, staff does find that the application complies with all provisions of the City of Leavenworth Development Regulations. The second is that the proposed special use at the specified location will contribute to and promote the economic development, welfare, or convenience of the public. The proposed special use would benefit the public in a number of ways. City of Leavenworth trash trucks currently are required to drive to Shawnee to dispose of trash once full, taking an extended amount of time and negatively impacting the level of service to residential customers in Leavenworth. The ability to deposit trash at a transfer station within Leavenworth city limits would significantly reduce the amount of time spent in between loads for each truck, having a positive effect on the service for Leavenworth residents. And additionally, residents would have the ability to bring their own trash and recycling items to the proposed facility instead of needing to drive to the county transfer station in Lansing to dispose of items. The third is that the special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located. Yeah, I'm just going to bring up the zoning map. Right there in the middle where it says I-2 is where we're looking at Abel's Field. So again, the property is zoned I-2, which is heavy industrial zoning district, and it is surrounded by other industrial properties to the east and to the south. Directly to the east is the City of Leavenworth Wastewater Treatment Facility. To the east across Second Street is the Geiger Ready Mix Facility. To the south along Fourth Street is Tire Town. And to the west across Fourth Street are multiple commercial properties zoned GBD, which is General Business District. Directly adjacent to the north is the Tower Self-Storage Facility. And then to the north across Poplar Street is Stubby Park, as well as several existing single-family homes. So with a number of existing heavy industrial uses in close proximity and measures put in place to limit truck traffic and limit the disruption for the uses to the north, there is no indication that the proposed special use would cause substantial injury to the value of the property and the neighborhood. Number four.
Okay, sir.
Number four is the location and size of the special use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that the special use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood so as to prevent development and use of neighboring property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. So again, the proposed special use would be accessed via Second Street, which already does support a number of industrial uses. The applicant indicates that they anticipate 16 to 20 commercial trash trucks utilizing the facility each weekday, with less than five on Saturdays and six transfer trailers leaving the facility per day. The anticipated volume of commercial traffic does not indicate a significant increase above what is already present in the area. And the proposed transfer station would be well-contained within the 14-acre property, would be screened, and would not dominate the surrounding neighborhood. So the Planning Commission did consider this item at their July 1 meeting. During that public hearing, 11 individuals spoke in opposition to the request, and one individual spoke in favor of the request. During that meeting, there were four motions made by the Planning Commission. Each of those resulted in a two-to-two vote, as we only had four members present. So that resulted in the Planning Commission failing to make a recommendation. Kansas statute does state that if a planning commission fails to make a recommendation, that the planning commission shall be deemed to have made a recommendation for disapproval. Prior to the public hearing at the Planning Commission, notification was sent to property owners within 200 feet of the property, as required by Kansas statute. After those notifications were sent, staff did receive written comments from several individuals. Those have all been included in the packet that was distributed to you. So there are several options for action or motions by the commission, and so I will let Attorney Waters kind of explain those, just since it's a little bit different situation with the Planning Commission having failed to make a recommendation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Attorney and City Commissioner David Waters, City Attorney. Set a little bit of context for you, and I just want to remind you that maybe your discussion here tonight is in the context of this is a land use decision. This is not so much about history or political futures or aspirations or things like that. This is a land use decision. Kansas law has certain criteria that they ask for you to consider. Not in these necessarily weighing one more than the other, but I provide these to you as a bit of the framework. Have you heard of these before, the so-called golden factors, the golden medieval rural park? So I just kind of will remind you of those as a helpful guide in how you frame your discussions and considerations of those issues. So in addition to the four criteria that Julie mentioned, the criteria, the golden factors are that you're supposed to be considering the character of the neighborhood, the zoning and the uses of nearby property, the suitability of the property for the proposed use, the extent to which granting the SUP would detrimentally affect nearby property, the length of time that the subject property has been vacant. That's a faculty to go into if a property has been said vacant, then perhaps zoning changes or approvals sometimes might be required if nothing else is happening. The relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare from any negative impact that the SUP has granted compared to the hardship on the landowner if the SUP or the application is not approved. We balance those factors out. The recommendations of the permanent staff and performance request of change lead up to the recognized master plan. As Ms. Hurley mentioned, there are essentially three choices for you tonight. And I love it. It's a little bit different. I do have first considerations and second considerations. But to boil it down in a nutshell, your options are to approve or at least move forward for approval, the special use permit. If you did that, that would be overriding the recommendation of the planning. At this stage in the process, an override would require four votes of the members of the governing body. So whether there are four people there or five people there, four votes is what we would need ultimately to override the planning commission's recommendation. At this point, and I'll get into that a little bit. If you want to uphold the planning commission's recommendation, which it is to deny, you would move forward by a simple majority on that. Another option for you that you could do by simple majority is to remand the matter back to the planning commission for further consideration of an issue. The statutes require is that upon remand, you have to provide a statement as to why you're remanding it to them, provides you've got that, is why aren't we sending this back to you? And what do you expect to hear? Now, in that situation, if they did, if you amended it and the planning commission came back, the override rules change. Let's assume the planning commission still continues to recommend denial, but we don't know what the recommendation could be. Then in that case, the override would not require that super majority vote, that's just what the statutes. But at this stage tonight, if you were to override the planning commission's recommendation, which means to approve the application without ultimately requiring four votes, but to support it or to remand it, it would be three votes.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Waters. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So if you have any questions for staff, I can answer those, and the applicant is here as well to speak about the proposal.
Okay, I would like to welcome the applicant to come up if you'd like to offer anything or discuss.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Bobby Hancock. I'm here at Brother's Disposal, and I am also a lifelong resident of Leavenworth, Kansas, and I am 52 years old. I also played football on that field. I coached my kids on that field. I, when nobody else was taking care of that field, a gentleman named Todd Schuler and I paid to have the field mowed so that our kids could play there and so that a Northeast Kansas League could play there. We are part of this community. We are also the people that step in when the city trash falls behind for a number of reasons. Nobody's fault. We're all in the same boat together. We're all looking for the same goal here. We step in, we pick up whoever's trash it is, no matter if it's somebody that yells at me, whether it's somebody that loves me, whether it's somebody that throws rocks at me or hands me a water. We still take care of that because we are part of this community. With that said, I'm extremely excited to be here to introduce our project and actually put forth some facts. First of all, we are a private business. The city has nothing to do with saying, hey, Brother's Disposal, we want you to do this. We are a private business, working through a private owner of Abel's Field, which is actually 1701 South Fourth Street, in case nobody knew that. I'd like to explain what a transfer station is and how it can benefit everyone. I'd also like to explain what they aren't, as there are a lot of misconceptions. In simplest terms, a transfer station is just like any receptacle for garbage. We all have them at our homes. We store our garbage there. Once a week, maybe every eight to 10 days, depending on what's going on, we bring our trash out. It's picked up. Every restaurant, every business also has a receptacle for garbage. Some restaurants may be picked up twice a week. Some may be picked up three times. None of them are picked up multiple times a day. And my point is, there is garbage in those containers throughout a day, and somehow we're able to function around that. People take care of their property. People spray the containers down. The trash is taken away to a facility. It doesn't rot. It doesn't blow everywhere unless we let that happen. And that's a partnership between a company like mine, a resident, and a business. That's just how it works. So to, you know, further that, when the truck picks up the garbage, it's brought to either a transfer station or its final destination being a landfill. The city now brings it to a landfill. It may take them two hours to get there and back. It may take them three hours to get there and back. During that time, trash is not getting picked up on the streets. And what we call our trash trucks are route trucks. They're route trucks. They should be on a route, picking up garbage, picking up restaurants, taking care of your businesses. A lot of times, these trucks and others that don't have the benefit of a transfer station or somewhere close, they're basically on the highway more than they're picking up routes. We can get into that a little bit more later. The debris is brought to a receptacle. It's picked up into a larger vehicle. The truck then travels to either a landfill or transfer station to offload. Landfill is the final destination for debris. But a transfer station acts just like a receptacle at your home or your business. Transfer stations are vital when it comes to saving travel times for customers, providing a safe experience for the customers, and providing a clean experience for the customers. A few common misconceptions are that the facility is a dump, which is very easy to say. It's a fun word to say. It's easy to say that there will be hundreds of trucks when we don't actually have the facts. It's easy to say it's an inner-city dump, toxic disaster. There's a scheme involved. And since we do still live in America, I think I'll just take the opportunity to say that I believe that all of those words are wrong. This is the vision for our project. Our vision is to operate a facility that offers a recycling drop-off area for residents, a citizen drop-off area, which by the way, is now located behind the old Waymires. And for those that haven't lived here as long as I have, that's where Tin Penny used to be. And for those that haven't lived here as long as I have, that's where the La Fiesta is now. Behind there is where the citizen drop-off area is now for free Saturdays, and it's also the recycle area. That's where that's located right now, right in that neighborhood. As well as accepting commercial, residential, and construction debris in a safe, convenient, and responsible manner. The property, as we all know, used to be a football field, a place where we all have fond memories. I completely understand there are strong emotions about the historical value of this property. I would never discount what this has meant to all of us. It was a huge part of the landscape of our town, right up until the USD sold it and built a new, beautiful stadium behind the high school. The property owners at that point graciously let local Catholic school use it, I'm aculata, the young kids, as I spoke about before, over the next couple of years. A zoning change was then applied for and approved based on the same golden factors that we're going to talk about tonight. The plan even then for the city was to have some type of industrial facility there, making use of the property. The property's been vacant for close to 15 years now. The zoning matched up perfectly with the neighborhood, as we all look at the map. There's a concrete company. There's an asphalt plant. There's an old battery factory that stores dozens of tractor-trailers, now a tire sales and warehouse business. There's a manufacturing company, which by the way, looks beautiful. There's a wastewater treatment facility, and those are all direct neighbors to the east and the south. Commercial businesses to the west and a park across the street to the north separate this property. It's separated by large trees and the storage facility, as you can see on the map. We can all look at the map here of the proposed building as it relates to the park. The building will be about 1,000 feet away from any entrance of the park. The building is facing south to mitigate any type of noise going toward the park, unlike their neighbors. The neighbors are there. We can see that the building is protected by mature trees to the east, south, and north, which will all be left, and a large hill leading up to Fourth Street on the west. We can also see the concrete plant in the map, the storage facility, and the wastewater treatment plant. We plan on making aesthetics a very important part of this project. Again, we are also part of this community, and we also have family that travel. And there is no possible way that we would ever do anything to the detriment of our city. Fencing would be replaced with black powder-coated fencing along Fourth Street on the north and on the north side, just north of the existing building, which again, if you haven't been here as long as I have, that used to be the locker room. There'd be eight-to-nine-foot-tall, all-seasoned trees planted the entire length along Fourth Street, along with dense shrubbery. And along the fencing on the north side and also along the road. and along the fencing on the north side, and also along the road next to the actual transfer station, which is basically down in the inner part of the field. Again, that's to help out with any type of noise and aesthetics. The existing building would be painted to match the new transfer station building and the scale house. All commercial traffic would use Marion Street intersection that has been widened for industrial use with partial KDOT grants based on the zoning in that area. The same light is used by other companies in that area, a moving company, a grocery store, and the other earlier-mentioned companies. This facility isn't attracting more commercial vehicles. Nobody's going to come from Kansas City to come here to use this facility. This facility will be used by the citizens, the city, hopefully, us, and a few of the Stragler Waste Management Trucks and Republic Trucks that come through, that are already here traveling our streets every single day to take care of their customers. It is offering a spot to use instead of traveling further south to other facilities. Again, the reason behind a transfer station is to keep five large vehicles off of the highway and replace it with one normally-weighted trailer. Get those route trucks back on the route. Our proposed hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 7:00 to noon on Saturdays. These hours are also much shorter than our direct neighbors right now. The entrance is on Second Street, and even though large vehicles use Poplar Street and drive right past the park every single day dozens of times, we have conceded to use the Marion to Second Street in and out. As you enter the facility, our recycle drop-off area will be conveniently located away from other traffic so that the residents can get there, drop off the recyclables, and then go on about their business. This can be used at all open hours during the week. A dedicated commercial lane is then available for the convenience and efficiency of any commercial driver. Get them in, get them out, right back on the route. Last, there's a lane for cash customers to include construction contractors and citizens. Loads from citizens that only have a small number of items would fast-track to the large-item dumpsters where they would unload, and then they're right back out also. They would never have to deal with the larger traffic in the building. Construction contractors and commercial vehicles would use the building. The debris is offloaded on the floor and transferred to the trailer that is located at one end of the building, basically in a basement area so that it's lower than where you offload and that it's able to be loaded easily and packed. The entire idea is to receive the debris, get it in the transfer trailer as soon as possible, and once loaded, get the trailer on to the final destination. The trailers have seals on the doors. They have heavy plastic tarping mechanisms to stop anything from blowing. It's absolutely imperative that the trailers are hauled once they are full. We don't want any smell. We don't want rainwater making the loads heavier that we have to pay for. We don't need to have empty trailers, and we need empty trailers for more debris. It's in everyone's best interest to get this done in a safe, efficient, and responsible manner. We have partnered with Kenny Lado of CLO Transportation out of Olathe that is just as committed as we are to taking care of this. This company has handled transfer projects for General Motors, Purina, Smart, Dryers, Kelmar, and many other large companies. They assure me that they will be able to keep up with whatever we need, and they have multiple trucks and drivers to use in the case of an emergency. With that said, we only anticipate six trailers per day, six. We only anticipate 16 to 20 actual commercial trash trucks. Both of these numbers are a small fraction of the number of concrete and asphalt trucks used in the exact same industrial zone area. The building will also be equipped with fire suppression in the event that any type of spark ever came up. It'd be equipped with a misting and fogging system and as an added defense to take care of any odor. We recently visited a fairly local transfer station in Grandview, which is going through the exact same, was going through the exact same issues. There was a dedicated neighborhood within about 350 feet of their proposed spot. The proposed spot wasn't even zoned I-2. They got through the zoning and they got through the S U P. And in September, they'll be in operation for two years with zero complaints whatsoever. It is possible. It's a possible thing to do. And by the way, that facility hauls over 1,000 tons per day, and we're projected to do 160. Ed also visited that with me, and he may want to talk about that to attest to it. Some of the benefits for the city and therefore the citizens of Leavenworth are: the recycle drop-off area open five-and-a-half days per week, convenient, clean. The city would still haul the containers and keep any revenue from the recycling, but it would be insured to be open, and they would save labor with collecting it throughout the week. A convenient citizen drop-off area, offering a safe and fast area to get rid of any unwanted items. With that said, I got a phone call this morning where an abandoned house didn't have two couches sitting in front of it last night, and now all of a sudden, somebody did dump two couches in front of it. The entire reason is to get a convenient area so that we can cut down on illegal dumping. I've constantly got customers with dumpsters where somebody backed their pickup truck and just unloaded a thing of roofing materials. Give them somewhere to dump. The free Saturday drop-off that's offered now in the city, which, again, is behind the Old Waymires, could be taken care of at this facility. Basically, they would come in, offload their items, and they'd be right back out. Very little commercial traffic that day. They'd be out. We would check the resident's driver's license, and we would only charge the city for the actual tonnage that came through. Now, all of a sudden, the city saves money on hauling those containers, manning that station every first Saturday, and taking care of the debris. This would save the city labor and be more convenient for the public, in our opinion. Fuel for the city trucks, labor for the city, tires, oil changes, upkeep, and time on the route instead of the highway. Less time on the road is safer for everyone. Less miles, wear and tear on the trucks, equals savings. All of a sudden, the city buys, they buy trucks less often than they did prior to this because they're not traveling as many miles, just as we would in our personal vehicles. Even if the city is able to keep up with the current situation as far as labor and getting the garbage picked up in a timely manner that we've grown accustomed to, the travel savings in itself still takes care of that. It's being able to do it in 12 to 15 minutes rather than two-and-a-half to three hours. Even when it comes to safety going down the highway, you cannot put a number on that. You just can't. I never wanted this to be a political topic, yet somehow it's become that for some, and that's okay. And by the way, I allowed everybody to speak up here without any type of noise coming from me, but... Again, that's okay that it's a political topic. I'm perfectly fine being transparent, and I'm perfectly fine talking about facts. What I can't do is talk about things that are not factual. I cannot combat that, and nobody can. When it comes to the golden factors that we've talked about, that is not political. To me, this is why we follow those parameters, to take the politics out of it. There are certain criteria that everything has to hit, just like, you know, if I wanted to paint my house a certain color, my neighbor certainly couldn't come here and complain about it. They just couldn't. I like that color. Everyone, in the end, wants the same goal. Making use of the empty property is one of those goals. Even though the project isn't what everyone wants, there are people that do agree with it. Believe it or not, I have gotten plenty of phone calls, plenty of messages that actually ask questions, they actually understand. And if they don't agree with it, that's perfectly fine. If they do agree with it, then that's perfectly fine. But the goal was to educate them and get that part taken care of. I've also spoken to many people that were opposed to it before, heard the plan, and then decided, "Oh, I thought it was going to be a dump. I thought we were going to have to worry about our water. I thought we were going to have to worry about some type of toxicity. I thought we were going to have to worry about burning tires." It's not the case. The S U P itself has parameters that we have to live up to. Otherwise, it can be taken away. K D H E, which is the state regulatory board, they inspect everything. They take care of that. There's plenty of people that we have to answer to, but, again, the most important ones that I would answer to would be our citizens. Emotion should not be one of these parameters, and it's not. We plan on a park-like atmosphere with almost seven acres of green space left after our footprint, again, as you can see in the pictures. We have laid out the plan for noise, traffic, and odor, of which none will be an issue. I trust that you will also see the benefit, weigh it against the golden factors, and approve this project to move forward. And I'm open for any and all questions. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to go ahead and open it to the rest of the commission. Any thoughts, comments?
As legal representative for the project, I'd like to also speak, please.
Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
My name is Rhonda Levinson. I'm with Beavon Law Group. And I know attorneys are not the popular people always, but I wanted to make sure that we were all clear on what was happening, clear on the facts, that this is not a dump, that there are foggers and misters that are going to take care of odors in addition to the things that Bobby mentioned. And at the planning and zoning meetings, we heard a lot about how this is a great idea, a great project, but not in this spot, right? Well, that's a conversation we're perfectly happy to have. We can approve this to move forward or send it back to the Planning and Zoning Committee for that to be discussed more. And if there's an inclination to vote no at this point, then that's what I would ask you to do. Let's send it back to Planning and Zoning so we can have that conversation and talk about if the city wants to incentivize that, to have this project happen in a different location. That's one of the possibilities. Let's go back to Planning and Zoning and discuss that. So if there's any inclination to vote no on this project and uphold the planning and zoning, I ask that that's what we do. And just because a special use permit is approved, which it needs to be if you follow the law, if you follow the golden factors and the recommendations of the professionals you hired, this special use project or permit should be approved. But before you even have to do that, there's more conversation that could happen. And it doesn't mean that even if you approved it, it would happen today. It's not like Bobby's going to build this immediately. There's still time to the conversations about, "Let's incentivize doing it someplace else." But in the meantime, let's clear up some facts and talk about the actual location that's picked. And I had this printed out. I know that you guys have seen this, but I want to make sure the citizens could see it as well. That when you're talking about Stubby Park, it's here, right?
Yes.
Here is where this building's going to be. And the doors are going to face away from Stubby Park. There's all these trees that block Stubby Park, not just from this current project. Those trees blocks it from Drexel and from the sewage treatment facility. And at this point, we are all counting on the benevolence of Kaz's in not tearing that down, right? The current project leaves all of that tree screen in place. It protects Stubby Park from all of these other things that are already happening there. There's a sewage treatment plant down there already. And if this special use permit is approved, all of that tree screen stays where it is. More gets added. More landscaping goes up along Fourth Street. And again, the doors are facing away from the park. They're facing to the side of the street, so it's not something you see. The project's going to sit down in this depression, which suppresses the smells, suppresses the noise. You won't see this project from Stubby Park as it sits now, right? So, we can do this at this location, and it's a good thing. Because think about what was your number-one email in your inboxes before this happened. I know I talked to Holly about this. The number-one email that all of you got all the time. What was it? Trash. It was trash sitting in the streets. It was trash sacks piled up everywhere. It was trash getting ripped open by dogs. It was trash getting ripped open by raccoons. And it smelled bad. It sat there, right? So the point of Bobby's plan is that the city workers can spend their time picking up that trash and not driving long distances because the fact is that they are not using the dump, the transfer station, that's out in Leavenworth County. That's not what they're doing. They're driving hours to go to a different place.
Nope. Geez. Let's get moving. Sorry. We're just discussing this with...
That was a question that somebody had earlier, and I'd love to answer that. The county transfer station used to be tax subsidized. It stopped being tax subsidized a number of years ago. The rate basically doubled at that point. It is not cost-effective to use it anymore. It costs the city less to actually go to the landfill than it does to go there. They're trying to save the citizens money by doing that. It's just a simple, one of those fact things. The other issue with that transfer station is it's really not designed for the amount of traffic that they're getting. We sit there for about an hour at a time, on average, to offload our trucks.
And Mr. Hancock, I would just like to say, at this point, I'd like to keep the conversation between you all and the commission right now, if we could, so...
So my point, though, is that the city workers are sitting there for long periods of time. This will expedite them doing their job. This will eliminate the odor on the streets. It will get it to the transfer station, which, you know, Ed has been at, and I'm sure he could speak to the fact that the good transfer stations, the well-designed ones, don't have the odor issues. So, we can eliminate those problems and create something that really hits factor six on the golden factors, which is the community good, that the community as a whole will benefit from this. There'll be more money in the budget. You could do things like save the community pool. The other thing to keep in mind here is that this is heavy industrial use, that without a special use permit, the owner of this property can put in a junkyard with no special use permit whatsoever. This special use permit is one that maintains the beauty of this spot, maintains the landscaping, and helps the public good. In terms of doing it somewhere else, there's only a few houses that are affected by this, and no one involved has filed a formal protest. And none of the factors that have been raised here tonight raise any facts or evidence that would lead to a contrary conclusion. that would lead to a contrary conclusion, other than what your city professionals have reached. They've made the recommendations. They've carefully gone over each of the factors and laid them out for you. So our request is that you follow the law and you follow the factors set out by the professionals that you have hired to make this evaluation. That there is a significant help to the public good here, that every other factor is in favor of approval of this special use permit. If you choose to not grant the special use permit, we would ask that you would state on the record which of the golden factors did you find way in favor of allowing the special use permit? But I would ask that Ed could perhaps speak to the issue of how a true transfer station and not a dump is taking.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we'd like to open it up to the commission. Any comments or thoughts or questions?
I have a question for Julie. The emails that we received, were those people that were in the 250 feet?
No. None of the correspondence that my office received that was in the packet were anybody that was in the notification area. I can't speak to what maybe you guys received. I know the commission received a lot of emails that my office didn't get copies of. But the ones that we included in your packet were not anybody that was in the notification area.
And how many homes were there? Can you tell me? Or did you even have enough?
I don't have that with me. I should have brought that. But there weren't many homes. I'll zoom in just a little bit.
So the ones right there by the?
Yeah, there's just a few on the north side of Poplar. Yeah, it's maybe like four or five homes. I'm probably on the north side of Poplar that were within the notification area.
Okay, thank you.
We're over there.
Yes. Our American Legion is a historic place.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks. We appreciate it. We're going to go ahead and keep discussing up here. Ed, Nancy, guys have any comments on anything?
Yeah. Has an environmental impact statement been accomplished, or is that due yet?
Are you asked? Bobby, or you can come, you can sit here, Bobby, if you want.
So as per K D H E, there's no environmental impact study that has to be done for an actual transfer station because there is no garbage that's actually buried in the ground, dumped on the ground, nothing like that. It's literally, it's literally just like the dumpster that we're dumping at any restaurant.
I didn't know if that was.
I understand.
I would tell you all that, yeah, I went out to Grandview. I went to visit. I drove out myself to go out there and visit the transfer station that's been installed out there. And I was very surprised at how clean it actually is. It's a heck of a clean operation. I was very surprised. It also is huge compared to what would be put in here. And even that is only taking up 14 acres, you know, which is the total of what I think you've got here.
Correct.
14 acres. They had a very smooth, easy-running operation. Trucks came through. They dumped the contents that they had into the bigger trailers. The bigger trailers were then pulled off, covered up twice, so that nothing did blow around or fall out. Things that were hanging out were pulled off to be put in the trash. And then the stuff left. I mean, it uses a heck of a lot more trucks and such there. And yeah, the subdivision that is off to the east of it, which is, it just goes on from one end all the way to the other, has made no complaints. And it's their backyards that are backed up against it, you know? And that's, I believe that was only 25 feet from the fence line of the property that the place is on. Now, I got to tell you, we're not going to use exactly the same, exactly the same technology that they're using. They've got patented technology that they're using to make all this happen. I think what Bobby is intending to use is something similar to that. But to use what they call, you know, their company's even called Raptor, you know? To use that would cost, probably make it cost prohibitive. So that's what I saw when I was out there. I was really, really amazed at how big it was and how clean it was. Oh, and smell? Not until I went into the actual building where the garbage is dumped into and went over and stood by the pit, you know? That's what I, that's when I was able to smell something. Now granted, my nose has been broken three times. So maybe it doesn't smell perfectly. But I mean, I got over there, I had to get over there before I could, could I really smell it. I was surprised at that.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay. I have, just to kind of share on this side, I have given it thought. And I have considered the golden factors as well. And. Can you hear me now, okay?
Turn your mic on.
Okay, I'll just talk louder. I have given it some thought, and I have weighed the golden factors. And I am inclined to agree with the planning commission on the denial of the issuance of the special use permit. So if there are any other comments, I would.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move for consensus on the first consideration of ordinance to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission and deny the issuance of the special use permit to allow a solid waste facility on, in the I-2 zoning district at 1701 South Fourth Street, and move such ordinance to second consideration.
We just need a consensus on that. Do we all agree?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
We're done.
All right. We'll move on to next item on the agenda tonight.
No.
I'm sorry. I'll, 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 a public comment right now will have to cease for tonight. We'll just wait a sec, sorry. Okay.
No.
Everybody has the other? Thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay, sir. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move to the mayor's appointment tonight. And as they apply everybody, clear out the seat, everybody.
Yeah, let him go. Let him go out.
And then shut the door.
Yeah.
All right. Folks, if you could go ahead and clear the chambers now. Appreciate that.
You should go.
Folks, thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and move to the mayor appointment tonight. And I, Mayor Martin, move to appoint to the Board of Zoning Appeals Ron Bates Jr. to a term ending May 1st, 2027. And appoint to the Parks and Community Activities Board Charles Chuck Johnson to an unexpired term ending January 15th, 2027.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 Motion passed 4-0. Item four, presentation of 2023 audit.
I don't know how many people are here, so as far as.
So you are here, and your presentation is right here.
Oh, excellent. Look at this. I've never actually talked to this guy.
Wow, we got lots of.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners.
Here, Burt.
Mark Stare, CPA from Hood and Associates CPAs, was the manager of our audit for the 2023 fiscal year. And he will be presenting this 2023 audit. A copy of the audit report can be found on our website at www.levanworthkansas.org. And with that, I give it to.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll just go ahead and jump in and try to keep my session a little short. Make up a little ground here. There is a presentation on the screen, but I also gave you all a copy of these slides. So we are here to present the financial and compliance audit for the year ended December 31st, 2023. Let's see. I'll give you first a little bit of background about us. We are Hood and Associates CPAs. We serve Missouri, Kansas, Oklahoma, and Texas. With our most recently performed peer review, we were awarded the highest rating given for a peer review, which is just a rating of pass without any comments. We are members of the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, the AICPA Government Audit Equality Center. One of our partners is a member of the governmental services audit team in the GFOA Special Review Committee. And we are currently licensed in Missouri, Kansas, Oklahoma, and Texas as a firm. The scope of our audit was the annual comprehensive financial report that you all do each year, as well as a single audit for your federal grant compliance portions. With that, the single audit, I'll move the slide to you soon. But the single audit, we use a threshold of $750,000 to determine major audit programs. The major programs this year were the Coronavirus State and Fiscal Recovery Act, also known as ARPA funds. The public and Indian housing portion of your HUD dollars, although that was not $750,000, it was a major type B program. And the other HUD program that takes in, or that received $2.4 million had already been audited last year as a major program. So we audited this other program as major per our standards. Management responsibilities. Management is charged with the responsibility to prepare the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles within the United States of America. Those require the design and implementation of internal controls to ensure that the financial statements are presented with free from material misstatement, whether that's due to fraud or error. They are charged to follow the laws and regulations, including financial reporting and compliance matters. They are charged to ensure that financial information is reliable and properly reported. So again, that speaks to the internal control processes to generate that data. They are to select and apply the appropriate accounting principles as they relate to the financial statements, the statement of federal expenditures, or the statement of expenditures of federal awards, which is also known as the CIFA, and also the any required and not required supplementary information presented in the audit report. Our responsibilities as auditors is to conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, the government auditing standards, and the uniform guidance, which is the portion for the federal awards. With that, we plan and perform our audit to obtain a reasonable, but not absolute assurance that the basic financial statements are free of material misstatement. This is a risk-based audit, so therefore we sample instead of testing every single transaction, which would cost the city significantly more. And that is why we don't provide absolute assurance that nothing happened. We also issue a report on the internal controls over the financial reporting and the compliance with laws and regulations. That is included in your single audit report. The Auditing Standards Board of the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants recommends that we communicate the following matters to the governing board. The first is illegal acts. Within our audit, we did not come, or no acts came to our attention that would result in us communicating an illegal act that we, you know, that was, that was found. The next item is changes in significant accounting policies. This year, there was one significant change. And that is that the city implemented the Government Auditing Standards Board Statement Number 96, Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangements, also known as Sabidas, which was similar to the LEAS standard implemented last year that moves some of these agreements onto your balance sheet instead of just in the notes. There were no difficulties come across with management and the performance of our audit. And management provided us full cooperation and access to all of the books and records that we requested. Financial and compliance audits address three basic questions. The first is, are the financial statements free of material misstatements? With that, or to answer that question, we have issued our report with an unmodified or clean audit opinion. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. Are internal controls over financial reporting adequately designed and operating effectively? Our audit did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses. And I'll even go a step farther. We did not have any significant deficiencies even. Had we identified any of those items, we would have to report those to you. And finally, is, did the city of Leavenworth comply in all materials respects with the finance-related laws and regulations? And we are issuing a report in which no noncompliance was noted with the finance-related laws and regulations. Again, that's going to be your, single audit report is the compliance. We are issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on that as well. Other management letter comments. Again, this is going to be found in your required communications packet, not within one of the two audit reports. And we did have three this year. The first comment is about cybersecurity. That can be found on page three of the required communication. It's basically just a reminder to make sure that you update these procedures on a regular basis. As you are probably well aware, several cities and hospitals in particular around the area have been dealing with cyber attacks lately. So that's, we decided this year to basically include this in every audit that we do. The second was about financial policies and procedures needing to be updated, or rather, just considered for updating. We did not find any issues with the current policies and procedures. But again, like the cybersecurity, we like to remind people to just be thinking about this every few years. So we kind of put this back into the letter every, every so often. Those are just procedural thoughts from us, so that there was no incident that occurred that made us think, oh, we better let them know to do this.
Sounds good.
Future accounting pronouncements. This is one that's required by the standards, and it's in every single audit report or required communication letter that you guys will get. The first two are to be implemented next year, and that is number 100 and number 101. 100 is the accounting changes and errors, accounting changes and error corrections, which amends Statement Number 62. And number 101 is about compensated absences. We believe the city has already fully implemented both of those pronouncements, so there won't be anything to do immediately. Two years down the road, Statement Number 102 will be effective, which is about risk disclosures. There may be a few things to change there, so Roberta and her staff will consider the impact that those have on the city. And then finally, three years from now will be Statement Number 103, the financial reporting model improvement. And again, Roberta and her staff will be considering what changes need to happen for that. Any of her comments and responses to these three comments that we made in our letter are included in that letter, so you can read those, and I encourage you to do so. The last thing I have to say is that we appreciate the opportunity to serve as your auditor, and we know the bid is up again this year. We intend to submit ourselves for consideration as well. It's been a pleasure to serve this city, and we'd like to personally thank Mayor Griff Martin, Mayor Pro Tim Holly Pittman, Commissioner Nancy Botter, Commissioner Ed Inglis, I'm going to mess it up because I heard him say it. And then Commissioner Jermaine Wilson, as well as Roberta, Finance Director Roberta Barr and her staff, who did a tremendous job with handling this audit and being prepared for all of our inquiries. So we just would not have the same success without her.
Nor would we.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll open it for any questions if you guys have any.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, yeah. Roberta keeps us in line, and we appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item five, request for feasibility study funding Frontier Museum of the U.S. Army Foundation. Thank you. Good evenings.
Good evening. Thank you all, Commission, for allowing us the opportunity to clarify exactly what we are doing and why I am here. The mission statement is very simple. It is that we have a reimagined Frontier Army Museum. It is not a hidden fact that most people of this area have not been to the current museum because of guards and guns preventing easy access. Well, that's going away. That's one of the functions of this new museum, the Frontier Museum of the United States Army. I am George Pettigrew, Chairman of the Frontier Museum of the United States Army Foundation. It is our responsibility to organize a campaign to construct and later gift this museum to the United States Army and to Fort Leavenworth, and thereby to Leavenworth itself. This is our team. I again am the chairman. The executive director unfortunately could not be here with us, but fortunately, he's on his way to a national reunion of the Buffalo Soldiers in Dayton, Ohio to present to them as well. They are one of our partners in this project. You see that mayor, excuse me, mayor, Major Richard Ripper is our Small Business Solutions. He is our treasurer. He is in Olatha, Kansas. Brian Wampler's Olatha. Rob Loft House, our program manager, also in Kansas City, Kansas. Ralph Snyder's legal advisor, and if you know Ralph, he also advises for World War One Museum. Amy Bateman, retired Lieutenant Colonel, is the owner and principal of Bateman Law Group here in Leavenworth. Jordan Chambers is our webmaster. He also lives in Kansas. And Ina Amos is our CRM Director. She is in Denver, Colorado. We try to keep things local as much as possible. We are not for profit. That's filed in the state of Kansas as of July tenth, twenty twenty-three. We're organized and operate exclusively as a charitable organization and educational purposes as well. One thing about our five oh one C three, and you tell me if you've ever heard before, that we filed for our final approval from the IRS. Final approval means that is that last determination whether or not we can go forth with our N as long as we remain within the guidelines. We had a return from the IRS in three weeks with a positive response. This is the level of business that we intend to do and what we bring to this community. Those things that are presumed to be difficult, we want to make them as easy and simple as possible. Best-in-class is something that we're after, and I'll show you that and much more coming forward. Now, we are also partnering with the United States Army in the Center of Military History. Just last Tuesday, we presented this project, this very same project, to the Conference of Army Historians. The PhDs and museums and historians from the United States Army worldwide were here at Fort Leavenworth. It was amazing the reception that they had for this project, and the most common comment was, you've thought of everything, and I think you'll see that. Currently, our partners are the Ninth and Tenth Horse Cavalry Association and their Capitol Campaign. That is why the Brigadier General is with them tonight. Advantage Printing is local. Armed Forces Bank, also local. Artist of Record Marietta Kennedy is also from Kansas. Bateman Law Group again. EAG Advertising is not local. However, we all know J.E. Dunn. And Leavenworth Lansing Chapter, we are members. Multi-studio Architects, they're licensed in Lawrence, Kansas. And I mentioned already R.E.R., who is our accounting and treasury. This is demonstrating our timeline, so you can see from left to right how far we have progressed, and we are very near. As a matter of fact, we're meeting again on the seventh of August to have our final visioning session, which will, for the first time, present all ideas, interior, exterior, and the grounds. This will be a complete makeover of the space. This is the space that we're talking about. Within that yellow box, there's about nine acres that we will take possession of only for construction. After that, this remains with the United States Army and the U.S. Government. The area that is to the right, this is between Sherman and Grant Gate. Inside that tree area, and we're not going in and doing what I think is a normal human attitude of taking a bulldozer and making the earth work to our wants and needs. We're working with the topography and with earth as it is. There's deep depression in those trees, and we intend to take the building, as you will see, and bridge that depression. So I also invite any of you to, or all of you, of course, to go on a tour of that area if you would like. We can easily arrange that. This is showing a footprint and the basic design that we're working with. That is a ninety thousand square foot facility. And to the right, even though it has trees in it now, that is the revamped parking lot. You can see again that it's in between Sherman and Grant Gates. Outside the fence line, the fence line is running at the gray line behind in between the trees. That means there'll be no fence, no gate open to the public, and also free to attend. This is a better look. As you see now, that is the bridging effect of the building, and even those walkways and the trails will be elevated. What you see to the right, those two darker spots, the one that is furthers to your right is what we are requesting in our building plan to put the visitor's center inside the museum, drawing people to the museum. And if they so wish from there, they can also go directly into the museum with no charge. And from there, if they wish to go and see the other sites of the fort, the visitor's centers in this building. Therefore, people will go visit the monument, cemeteries, and the other items and attractions that are on that fort, including the spot where Lewis and Clark is believed to have designated that area at Fort Fort. This is another view, and this view is looking from the north basically toward metropolitan with Sherman on the right, and that is the gate that is on the left. Right now, we're planning, as you see, the spur that leads off to the right-hand side, that is a future plan that is left there so that we can expand and extend the programming and the building to accommodate growth. Mentioning growth, an official from Smithsonian Institute, Washington, D.C., estimates this to have an average, and they say a low average, of a hundred and twenty thousand visits per year, averaging about ten thousand visits per month. This statue actually is me. Yeah, I know. It looks better. That statue in the background, you may be familiar with over in Shawnee Mission, on Shawnee Mission Parkway. And the little lady right there, that's Marietta. She is our artist. She's a Kansas woman, always has been. She is doing that for us as a part of the project. That monument will stand out there, and let me be clear, this will not be a Buffalo Soldier Museum. I think it's very important to understand that this museum represents what Fort Leavenworth actually was, a portal and protection for the development of the West. So we're not telling us a fort story. We're not telling a unit story from the fort. We're talking about the development of America, the most important part of development of America, happened here in this community. And that's why this opportunity to go partners with the United States Army and build this facility is happening here. It is not happening anywhere west of here at all. The only place close to not, or the closest place to us is in Texas that would have anything. And this, of course, is a unique design. The design that you saw doesn't exist anywhere. Total square footage, ninety thousand feet. That's including all of what we must have and what we also want to have, with a cost per square foot of eight hundred, which guarantees that you will have a best-in-class facility that's a seventy-two million dollar investment. That's my partner, retired Brigadier General Bryant Wampler, and me. As a matter of fact, that photo is part of a video that was made by the video production team at Kansas City Star, and you see there our website. I'll go through these quickly because they amount to only what will be a part of the design, and we're designing the outside of the building based on the relationship and the functions within. Collection storage, visitors' lockers, lobby, coat rooms, exhibit space that will be permanent, and will also have, very unique to this museum and Army system, a temporary museum or temporary exhibit space. If you notice in the bottom row in the middle, the Children's History Lab, that also is unique. It is a hands-on lab within a museum where kids can touch, instead of always being cautioned, don't touch. This is going to be interactive. As a matter of fact, we are also working with the idea of making that available, not the same as it is for the kids, but for adults as well. This is unique to any museum. The cafe, exhibit storage, exhibit space, these things are necessary. Large classrooms, that classroom, and then we have a warming kitchen, large classroom storage, a theater that'll hold a hundred and twenty-five individuals, dining area for volunteers and workers. Incidentally, the United States Army will staff and pay all the employees there. The same employees that are in the current Frontier Army Museum will be transferred to this new museum. The way we are able to use such a large facility with the same number of people is that we're building in the efficiencies. The building that's currently there from nineteen forty-eight, or was it thirty-eight, is not purposed for what it is and cannot be retrofitted to actually work. It will not make code. It cannot be stripped. It just cannot be used. It is, it is not used for that. The building was never for that purpose. It was a large classroom. Clean room photos, arms rooms, these are all things that must be a part of the workshop, education program, the director's office and other offices. We're also looking at moving in the director, if you see at the bottom, West Region offices. And we are entertaining the idea, we were approached to bring training to this facility for all museums in the Western Region of the United States. There's a workshop. So we think we've done that. Okay, great. I was going fast in that thought. But the idea is this, I'm not here to ask you for money now. What I do want to ask is for your support and continued cooperation with this, because it is our responsibility, my responsibility, to raise the seventy-two million dollars. And once that's done, I don't receive not a penny. I don't even receive gas money for my work now, and I've been doing this since twenty twenty-one. As a matter of fact, it was the twenty-first of January twenty twenty-one that Lieutenant General Ted Martin issued a press release, making the first public announcement about this coming here. And for the last two years, we've had excellent support of Lieutenant General Milford Beagle. Ladies and gentlemen, I want, I want the entire community to understand that we're here to give. We're not asking for seventy-two million dollars or two million or twenty. We really want to be able to work with you now. What is important about the forty-seven-five that is there, number one, feasibility study is a basic tool. For us to raise the money we need to raise, we need that tool. You even need it here in town for businesses. How much will this bring to our hotel? How much will this bring to our restaurant? How much will this bring to our city? It'll bring you more than it'll cost. And I think it's important to add that our construction plan is not a twenty-year building, which is normal for a business building. J.E. Dunn is talking about a one-hundred-year construction, and it will not look like an office building. It will not be glass and steel, nor will it be a big box, and it won't even favor the muse, I mean, the buildings that have been on that fort for the past hundred-plus years. It will reflect something entirely new, fresh. It'll be an icon and an emblem for this city, for this entire region. The Lieutenant Governor and the Kansas Tourist Department, they have put up forty-seven thousand five hundred, and it is a matching. So we either get all or we get none. And we're asking the partnership to extend, but like I said, that is not our ask now. I just want to explain that forty-seven thousand five hundred will not build this building. But we need it because it is a match. Otherwise, we give it back to the state of Kansas, and they're going to say, thank you? No, thank you. I'm asking you not to fail here, because that's one thing that keeps the state from going further. So it's really on us. I hope you can appreciate what I'm saying. I hope you can agree with me. And I say again, tonight, I am not asking for a vote or any funds, but what I would like to do right now is ask if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pettigrew. Appreciate that.
Mr. President, commissioners, just, I'm sure you have some questions for George at this point. I did want to bring to your attention the staff report and some of the details on there. So as George mentioned, he and Christie Lee from the Commission and Visitors Bureau met with Lieutenant Governor Boland, and at that time received a funding commitment of the forty-seven thousand five hundred to get this project started, to look at the feasibility study, and to get professional renderings. That would be a necessary next step for this group to pursue their project. The expectation was that additional fundraising would be done to provide that match. So that's the reason that this is coming to the city. That was staff's impression was that they were requesting the city provide forty-seven thousand five hundred match for the feasibility study and, and the renderings. And that was included in your staff report as the commission could determine whether they would like to fund that full request, whether they would like to, whether you would like to provide a lesser amount, or whether you weren't prepared to make a funding approval decision at this point. It is important to note that other existing local museums in the past have requested funding for building maintenance and other projects, as well as improvement on their collections. The Commission and Visitors Bureau has a grant program. It's usually up to five thousand dollars. That's run twice a year, and that generally covers marketing, outreach, and other, other items to really get the word out about the museums at Leavenworth and other items. So this wouldn't fit that program, similar to the other requests for, let's say, HVAC or building improvements, hasn't fit that program. So they have not received funding in the past. So this really is a unique request. I guess that's what the staff would say about that. But George, is there anything else that you wanted to say before we go? Questions from the commission?
No, I thank you for your consideration and again, for the opportunity to... No, I, I thank you for your consideration and again for the opportunity to explain this project because it is unique. The public-private partnership between the foundation and the United States Army is one that is either going to happen here or likely happen elsewhere, but there be no return. And I do want to emphasize again that a modest estimate was ten thousand average visits per month.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll put it up here.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, ten thousand per month is amazing. I'm anxious to see the feasibility study, to see what the economic impact is in our community. I, I really think that having something of this caliber would also bring people to our other museums. I mean, people who are interested in, in history, they also are interested in other parts of history. So I think the, the Carousel Museums, the other museums, Richard Allen Cultural Center all benefit from having this here. It's, it's, I think it's, it's a great concept and I'm looking forward to, to seeing the feasibility study, see what our impact is.
George, what's your timeline? When do you plan on?
Very good question. We have an aggressive timeline. We want to actually have the building, if not groundbreaking, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Twenty-sixth, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the nation, as well as the eyes of the world will be on our area with the World Cup. Twenty-seven, this fort is two-hundred years old, the third fort in the history of the United States ever to reach that age. And it is the largest and most important fort ever to have a bicentennial. So for that reason, the eyes of the world, the eyes of America, will be on this area. And we want to be as far ahead as possible. Because when that happens, we want to be ready. We want to take advantage of that organic attention because once the lights and the cameras are gone, they don't come back.
And how long will it take to build?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
So you're looking at opening it up and having visitors in there that are coming across the new bridge?
Yeah, about the same time.
Actually, before, if we can. Yeah, we do. We want to do that. You're, you're absolutely right. Right now, this fort is a major user of the airport, and that works both ways. So we have the connection. The focus will be here. And I dare say, I can, I, I did ask the question once, what was the last major project of this scope this city has seen? Especially one that is a revenue generator. We're not-
Our hotels.
Yeah, our hotels, that's a big, this big, though, as far as an attraction goes.
Yeah, not attraction, but yeah.
Yeah, not an attraction. Well, it would bring people to the hotels, to the restaurants, to the town, to shopping, to walking the pleasant streets. I love this small town, small, clean town.
Mr. Pedigree, that's, and I appreciate all the information you provided. So seventy-two million dollars is a lot of money to raise-
Yes, it is.
-in a very short amount of time, like you-
Well, it isn't like we just started, sir.
Well, I was curious on that. Because I, I didn't know if you raised, where that was at, because you know, I know you commented that the feasibility study was a key part of getting more money.
Yes, it is. And we are now in what we call the silent phase. We haven't gone major public yet. The silent phase is where we have been talking to key individuals. We have talked to individuals across this country. We've talked to Native nations, Native American nations. We've even had conversations that will be from interested parties overseas. Reason why, at the CGSC, at this fort, you had people that have come here and they've gone back to lead either the military and in some cases, even lead the nations. And these people are grateful. And the focus for that was here because they came here to go to class and go to school. And once they made it from here, they still come back. We have an international Hall of Fame here. So there is plenty of opportunity and plenty of interest. And yes, we have been talking to people, but we've been talking to them more or less on background. We were contacted today by a Kansas Indian tribe that is interested in participating. I had another conversation with a gentleman out of Virginia this afternoon, and he is talking about the Cherokee Nation coming to visit, the head of the Cherokee Nation coming to visit to see this project. So we really started working on getting it done, but we wouldn't go public until we had those conceptual drawings. People want to see where they're putting it. They love the idea. They'd like to see that idea.
So how, how much silent money do you think you have got built so far?
Are you limited?
Well, it's in the tens of millions and more. As a matter of fact, that may not be the greatest concern. The greatest concern could be that if they like it, they can fund it, and they will.
So, no, and I appreciate that, and it's good.
But I don't have a solid dollar account and figure for you, not to be evasive.
No, 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 you're totally fine. The only thing that goes through my mind is, you know, I mean, first of all, I love the idea of having a museum like that. I think it's really cool. You know, we don't have anything, you know, that caliber, you know, around right now. But, you know, the other thing that goes through my mind right now, I know we'd be using, it looks like, reserve funds, Roberta, on that, Penny. That, that cost is slightly less than the cost of a full-time employee for the city. And so definitely want to be cognizant of that as well. Where are we at right now in our reserve funds?
So the Convention and Visitors Bureau reserve funds, the amount I have is six-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand. That's really twenty-twenty-four adopted budget. But we have adequate funding to cover this.
Could I make a suggestion that maybe we table, not saying we're not going to give them, but table this until we do our budget and see how it fits in?
Yeah, I was thinking that. I'd like to get your main, you know, here too, the table also and talk through it. But I think that would be prudent because, yeah, there's just a lot. We just, we also just did a, a survey for our, our budget for the city and got a lot of, you know, good, good feedback on that. And, and it's something that we want to be very cautious of right now in how we do spend, you know, city funds. So I do agree with Mr. Pittman that we're not saying no, but right now, tabling that.
Do you have a timeline that the state of Kansas is saying?
The state of Kansas has not put a deadline on it.
Okay, good.
But we don't want it to continue to linger.
Correct.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I think it's been a year and a half since we had that meeting.
Oh, okay.
So those funds potentially won't be held indefinitely.
So they have been patient.
So our budget meeting is in?
The final vote, if there were absent any issues, would be August twenty-seventh for the budget to be approved. So is that sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. No, I feel, I feel better about that too. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So do we need a motion to table that?
I think so. Right? Motion to table?
Do we need to move to table? Or just?
No.
I don't think so. I move to table it to-
Second.
All right.
Future of meeting.
I tell you, Mr. Pedigree, I have visited the-
I just did. You just seconded it.
The Frontier Army Museum-
We didn't vote yet.
-a number of times. I bring guests there all the time. And I think this will just make it so much a better experience. And I, I agree with Commissioner Bowder, you know, it will also bring people, give people a reason, maybe some interest is piqued, to go and visit other museums, you know, go and visit Carroll Mansion.
Yes.
And, and the, what's the, the ladies?
The ladies?
Harvey Girls.
The Harvey Girls, you know, house.
Harvey House.
Yeah, the Harvey House, that places like that, you know, they don't get a whole lot of mention, but, you know, it'd be great for people to, to want to, you know, find out a little more about Leavenworth and the things that happened here in Leavenworth over the years.
How important it is, how important Leavenworth has been to the development of this nation. Actually, from here is what made the nation strongest in the world. It's what happened through here because every report, every item that was issued, every bit of manpower was controlled right here for all of the West. So I will say this one thing, that current museum is about twenty-three thousand square feet complete. The exhibit space here is twenty-eight thousand feet. And it's not going to be a big hollow building that has no character. It is loaded with character outside and in. And I'd also like to mention that this is an attraction. We, we don't really want attraction. We want a destination. We have NASCAR. When they come, they'll gladly come here. Ten miles away, they'll be happy to. If the Chiefs move over here, that's better for us. So I'm not sad about that. But all the possibilities is to grow attention here. And I, I firmly, absolutely believe, or I would not be working for free, it's hard to make this happen and then give it away.
No, thank you very much. We definitely appreciate all the feedback, Mr. Pedigree. Motion's been seconded to table until after the, well-
Upcoming meeting, yeah. To an upcoming meeting.
Begin voting, Commissioner. Can you go?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Can I take a five?
Yeah, I think we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break if we could. All agree? Yep? Okay, cool. All right, just like to welcome everybody back. We'll go ahead and continue the discussions on our meeting tonight with item six, Resolution B-2373, setting public hearing for unsafe fire damage structure, thirty-eight fifty-one Tongonoxie Drive.
Our chief building inspector, Hal Settle, will take the responsibility.
Good evening, members of commissioners. As you sit down, we're just setting a public hearing date for the fire damage structure at thirty-eight fifty-one Tongonoxie Drive. We can schedule for September tenth. At that time, staff and ownership would be able to give you an update and a plan of what they intend to do.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you, Hal. Yeah, I don't have any questions. Anybody else? Okay, then we just need a motion.
You move to- Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I move to adopt Resolution B-2373, setting September tenth, twenty twenty-four, as the date for the public hearing regarding the unsafe structure located at thirty-eight fifty-one Tongonoxie Drive.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed four to zero. Item seven, bids, contracts, and agreements, consider approval of contract change order number one for the City Hall parking lot and Seventh Street component for the twenty-twenty-three pavement management program.
May I, Commissioner, let's go to first director right now?
Right.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As stated, the item this evening is to consider approval of contract change order number one for the City Hall parking lot and Seventh Street component of the twenty-three pavement management program. This will be the only change order associated with this project. Last June, the City Commission did approve a contract with Baker Construction for the rehabilitation of the City Hall parking lot and North Seventh Street. Improvements to the East City Hall parking lot at City Hall included reconstruction of the base of the parking lot, as well as a new surface, stormwater repairs, alley repairs, along with ADA ramps, sidewalks, and curb steps and handrails all around City Hall. You'll see new sidewalks all the way around City Hall. Improvements along North Seventh between Kiowa and the alley north of Dakota include ADA ramps, sidewalks, curbs, and asphalt melon overlay. The project was designed to address the annual city parking lot rehabilitation and the continuation of the rehabilitation of North Seventh Street. These two locations were combined into one single project to obtain a more competitive bid. Notice to proceed was in September of twenty twenty-three. However, with their ongoing workload and the upcoming winter months, the majority of construction occurred this spring. Baker Construction did complete the project and a notice of acceptance was issued on May twenty-fourth of this year, and that's the date the two-year maintenance bond commenced. The initial purchase order for construction of this project was five-hundred-seventy-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. During the course of the project, it was necessary to have the contract perform extra work that was not anticipated. There were significant challenges with ADA ramp construction at the northwest corner of Seventh and Kiowa, along with project underruns and overruns on various bid items. At the conclusion of the project, the total final change order amount was one-hundred-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Some of the major items were at City Hall. Area inlets with pipe needed to be replaced. Curb inlet, curb inlet lids needed to be replaced to correct drainage issues. On Seventh Street, we needed to remove and replace two curb inlets that were in poor condition and in the wrong location for the upgraded ADA ramps. Additional concrete pavement and additional concrete construction of ADA ramps, curbs, and gutters in sidewalks were also needed. The net impact, the net impact for the project was an increase of one-hundred-nine thousand or nineteen-point-two percent over the original bid amount. The revised project total is six-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand-five-eighty-nine-fifty-nine. It is common in reconstruction projects through developed areas to see change orders in the magnitude of seven to ten percent, and this was higher than anticipated, but was needed to improve the project. The additional funding needed for this will come from the CIP curb and sidewalk programs. Staff recommends the City Commission approve change order one in the amount of one-hundred-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and nine cents for the City Hall parking lot and North Seventh Street component of the twenty-twenty-three pavement management program. I'd be happy to answer any questions, you may ask.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
It's pretty clear.
Very self-explanatory.
Thanks for the photos.
And all the information, yep. Then, yeah, it is self-explanatory. I just need a motion on that.
I move approval of the change order number one in the amount of not to exceed one-hundred-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and nine cents for the City Hall parking lot, plus North Seventh Street component of the twenty-twenty-three pavement management program.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed four to zero. Thank you. Okay, item eight, consider award of bid for fire station number one HVAC replacement project.
Great question. The Park Department staff will take care of the next two items.
Okay.
Right.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. The Park Department's here tonight with a request for you to consider the award of bid for the HVAC replacement at Station One. And just, even though it's kind of labeled as the HVAC, it's just a portion of it. It's a very large portion. It's just be the entire air conditioning system. We've recently, over the last few years, upgraded the boilers and the, the heating side and then the control work and stuff for everything, so. But over the last few years, we've just seen a, just a drastic rise in just maintenance costs on the, the air conditioning itself. And two years ago, we had them out. There were technicians out here at least ten to twelve times replacing parts and stuff. And then this year alone, right during that, about a month ago when that, when we were in that ninety-some degree heat, it went out and we lost half the, half of the AC unit outside, and it took several days. It, it was, it was up to, at one point, it was eighty-nine degrees indoors and offices and the guys' bedrooms and stuff, so.
It's not hot enough for you guys out there.
Exactly. So we, we got some, we got the guys to come out and look at it, and they found that the just half of the system lost all the refrigerant. And, and then they found, so there's obvious leak in there, and they found, they found it to be in the A coil, which is kind of hard to get to on this anyhow. So they sent several guys up here, and they were here for a couple of days working on it and patched it, and they were like, just hoping for the best on it. But it required a, the, well, the system requires an old refrigerant that's been banned. You can't even get, there's just very limited supplies of this in the country anymore, so. And what is there is, is just very, very expensive. So they did a kind of halfway converted it to a new refrigerant, and they said that they're, they're not even sure that is how long it will last, but they're hoping to limp us through the summer on that, so. And so far, so far, it's been doing good. But our, our station now is twenty-four years old and these systems, and, and we're still on the current, I know it's hard to believe in-
It's hard to believe, yeah.
So, but the, the current system, you know, that we're using, it's, it's original stuff to the station. And there's been design, a design flaw with that from the beginning. They've, they've come out since the, the station was built, moved the entire air conditioning system, changed up the piping and stuff, and it's still not ideal for what it is, so. And it's probably partly contributed to the, you know, the problems we're having now with it. But, but with that being said, the technicians have all told us that those systems have about a fifteen-to-twenty-year life cycle, so they're just, it's, it's just outside, you know, it's, it's over for, for this system. So we, we've known this for a couple of years. We've been kind of planning, we, last year, we, we requested some funds for the CIP for this year for this. And earlier this summer, we sent out a formal RFP and had a, we held a pre-bid meeting and a walkthrough of the station, and we only had three contractors that even showed up to it. And unfortunately, on the opening date, there was, there was only one contractor that turned in a, turned in a bid for it, so. contractor that turned in a, turned in a bid for it. So, and unfortunately, they, it was, it was under the requested amount that we had. But they did have, so they had a, they had a base bid of eighty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the air conditioning unit. But they, but they put some, they included some optional, you know, it's, it's going to be just some recommendations and stuff that they had. And one of them was that we were wanting to pursue is replacing the entire air handler. The, what, what was in the RFP was, when you switch to a new, new air conditioner that has new refrigerant, it requires new A coil and everything that's inside of the air handler. So they were gonna, for, to meet the RFP, they were gonna have to have a custom-built A coil to fit this old air handler that we have, and then replace the, the large motor inside that spins the fan that pushes the air throughout the building. And this, this, this company, in their bid, after speaking to them, they said that the cost of the custom, the custom A coil on there, and this, and then it's still not, you know, it wasn't designed as one unit. It's retrofitted and pushed into this existing one. They said that they can do a, a brand-new air handler, all, and it's, this thing is like eight, nine foot wide. It's a big square and probably that same height. It's, it's massive. And we didn't ask for that in the beginning, just because we thought that that was, just, that would just be way, way, way over the cost. So, but, but I guess the, the difference between the custom-built thing, he said it's a forty-six-hundred dollars, and the overall cost of that would be the, they would do, go ahead and replace the entire air handlers. And so we'd have an all-new cooling system, minus the ductwork in the building, so.
Still under budget, yep.
So, with, with that, where the staff's recommending that, that we award the base, the base bid along with the new air handler option to DiAgostino Mechanical Contractors for the sum of eighty-seven-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And just to, just point out that, that we were, we did request one-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars initially for the, you know, for a budgetary number. So even with the option, it's coming in eighteen-thousand dollars less than what we-
Good.
Sure thing. Okay. Any comments, questions?
No. Needed.
Okay, then just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend a bid from, is it Dagostino?
DiAgostino.
Yeah, mechanical contractor, is an amount of eighty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars for replacing the air handler. Oh, and you also want the-
Yes, with it.
And the air handler for four-thousand-six-hundred.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingal.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then item nine, request for approval of purchase of fire apparatus for the fire department. Hey, Chief?
Commissioner's, shit commander, time chief, Chris Walters, he, you know, has one of his add-on duties, other than another one to shit us each day.
Good evening.
He also is over like the maintenance of such a truck, so he's very integral part of the apparatus, so he's going to present it tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The Leavenworth Fire Department is requesting approval for the purchase of a seventy-five-foot Quint apparatus manufactured to our specifications, utilizing the Houston-Gallison Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program, which is managed by the Mid-America Regional Council. To give a brief background, in twenty-sixteen, the fire department revised our apparatus replacement model to closer-match guidelines set forth by the National Fire Protection Association, in an attempt to reduce our average service life from about twenty-eight years. The NFPA recommends replacements of apparatus every ten to fifteen years, considering call volume, miles, and maintenance. Other goals of the adopted replacement model include a standardized fleet by utilizing a single manufacturer, with the benefits of improved training and operator familiarity across the fleet, as well as improved acquisition of parts and use and maintenance, the reduction in age of the overall fleet, leading to reduced overall maintenance costs, improved safety and dependability of apparatus, increased points awarded by the ISO Insurance Safety Office for the fire department and city. If approved, this purchase would replace our two-thousand-nine-seventy-five-foot Pierce Quint, which is currently fifteen years old and has over one-hundred-and-four-thousand miles. In addition, approval for purchase would allow for six of our seven apparatus to be from one manufacturer. Although we have used the HGAC Cooperative Purchasing for our last five apparatus due to increasing costs, we requested price quotes from two other manufacturers with specifications as similar as possible. Conrad Fire Equipment, who sells and services Pierce fire apparatus and is located in Olathe, Kansas, was a lowest at over one-point-four-million dollars. We have been advised the current build time is up to forty-eight months after order, which would put our current Quint at around twenty years at delivery. In closing, the fire department staff recommends to proceed with the purchase of the seventy-five-foot Pierce Quint through Conrad Fire Equipment, utilizing the HC, excuse me, HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Program for one-million-four-hundred-nineteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents. The two, twenty-twenty-four CIP program, one-point-three-million in funds towards this purchase. Thank you for considering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, anybody?
Where does the other hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents come from?
That's what I was gonna ask.
I, I talk to finance, and that's what they said, that, you know, they program money, just like, you know, because we requested stuff like last year. We don't, can't project all the increases and stuff. And they anticipate things being less and things being more, and they said, so that's, that's just, you know, they, they kind of figured this. They didn't, we didn't know at the time what it was going to be a year ago, but they can anticipate things being less and things being more. That's what they told me.
So you're saying they can cover it?
They, they can cover, and we won't be paying for it until four years from now, or whatever it gets delivered. This would just allow us to get a PO to lock in the price. So-
Good.
With more price increases, we'll be locked in.
Thank you.
Cool. Now, that's the question I had, too, on that, honestly. So, yeah, sorry it takes so long. I think it just keeps going up. It used to be two years.
Yes.
That looks really good now, huh?
Everything goes up.
Okay, then we just need a motion.
I move approval to proceed with the purchase of the Pierce seventy-five-foot aerial truck through Conrad Fire Equipment, using the HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Program for one-million-four-hundred-nineteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passed four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten, consider approval of bid for state rehabilitation tax credits.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In March of this year, the city completed two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars worth of qualifying expenditures on rehabilitation of the Riverfront Community Center. I believe that was the roof replacement project. Since the building is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, we were able to apply for tax credits through the state. So, we did get notified that we received a credit for thirty percent of those project costs, which is eighty-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. Since the city pays no state tax, we have no use for those credits, and so we're able to sell those. So we did put out an RFP for the tax credits, solicited bids from financial entities. Basically, they're able to buy tax credits for a percentage of what we got, so we get the benefit, and then they get the benefit of the rest of that, that they purchased. So, we received one bid from Commerce Bank in the amount of ninety percent of our tax credit, or seventy-three-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents. So staff would recommend that the commission accept the bid from Commerce Bank for the purchase of the Kansas State Rehabilitation Tax Credits for the amount of seventy-three-thousand dollars, seven, seventy-three-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety dollars and twenty cents.
Where does that money go?
It goes back into, what, what we receive, yeah, back into the budget to offset those costs that went into the community center project.
Okay.
Cool. Are we, if we do approve, are we approving seventy-three, seven-ninety-eight, or seventy-three, seven-ninety?
Oh, I did miss the numbers. Let's see.
Eight dollars difference.
Ninety-eight, sorry.
Ninety-eight, okay, cool.
Yep, so seventy-three-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, just need a motion on that.
I move that the City Commission accept bid from Commerce Bank for the purchase of the Kansas State Rehabilitation Tax Credits for the amount of seventy-three-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Okay, motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingal.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed four to zero. Thank you. All right, so just moving on to the consent agenda for tonight.
I move that we accept claims for July fifth, twenty-twenty-three, uh, twenty-twenty-four, I'm sorry, through July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, in the amount of two-million, one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, ninety-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Net amount for payroll number fourteen, effective July twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, in the amount of four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and ten cents. No police and fire pension.
Second.
Okay, we begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed four to zero.
Sure, originally, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, we've been on here for a couple of weeks, so I wanted to make sure the public was invited to a open house on August seventh, two-thousand-and-twenty-four, from five to seven, to a, the city of Leavenworth is working to establish our first city Vision Zero action plan, and this is an opportunity for the public to come and get some input. So that is from five to seven, October seventh, at the Riverfront Community Center. You're certainly welcome as well, invited as well, but this is for the public broad information.
Great.
Thank you.
That's August seventh.
What did I say? Sorry.
August.
Is it October?
August.
It is August, yeah, good.
Cool, all right, thank you.
I was very excited to see all the people here today, to, to, to want to become involved in what we do here. And I'd love to see a whole lot more of that. There, there are some problems with rudeness at times, but I'd rather see the folks come here and, and put it on the mayor to try to control the mob, so to speak. But I was excited about that, and I thank you.
I don't, I don't have anything at this time. Does everybody have a good week?
I don't have anything. Have a good week.
All right, and, yeah, appreciate everybody that came out tonight. We did get some, some, some good feedback from the survey we put out about the budget. We did get a little bit less than two percent participation for total city population, so definitely, I think a few things we want to probably discuss in, in maybe a study session or something coming up. But, yeah, got some more information put together. So, with that, hope everybody has a great week. We will see you next time. And with that, just need a motion to close.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.